Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our regular council meeting for Wednesday, October the 8th. I want to thank council staff and members of the public for being here this evening. And those of you watching online, thank you so much for joining us. I wanted to let everyone know that this meeting is being audio and video recorded and livestreamed on the Town of Innisville's YouTube channel and shall form part of the record, which will be retained in according to the town's retention bylaw. And that will first go to Deputy Mayor Fowler for our land acknowledgement statement.
Thank you, worship. The Town of Innisville acknowledges that Innisville is situated on treaty land that is steeped in rich indigenous history. The town also acknowledges that this land is the traditional territories of the First People of Turtle Island. It is shared between the Anishinaabe people of Bossa-Lay First Nation, Chipewas of Rama First Nation, and Chipewas of Georgina Island First Nation, and we thank them for their generations of stewardship. This meeting place is still the home to many indigenous people, and as settlers, we are grateful to have the opportunity to work out, to work on this land. The town acknowledges the four sacrifices that are the foundation of Canadian society today. We are dedicated to honoring indigenous history and culture and committed to moving forward in the spirit of reconciliation and respect with all First Nation, Métis, and Inuit.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Fowler. Next is open forum. We have had no one sign up for open forum this evening, and so we'll move right to item three, which is the approval of the agenda. We did have one add-on, walk-on tonight, which is item F1, which Councillor Isis would like to bring to the floor. Because it is late, our procedural bylaw requires that the requirements be waived. And so because it's a time-sensitive item, which requires two-thirds vote in order to add that. So is there anybody who would like to separate the question and vote on that separately? Or are we all good with that addition? I'm seeing lots of nods, so I'll ask for a mover and a seconder, please, for the approval of the agenda as amended. Moved by Councillor Richardson, seconded by Councillor Zanella. All those in favor? That is carried. And I was remiss in not saying that Councillor Water sends his regrets tonight. He's unable to attend, but sends his regrets. Now we'll move to item four, which is disclosures of interest. Are there any conflicts or disclosures of pecuniary interests on any item on tonight's agenda? I'm seeing none. If one becomes apparent to you during the conversation, please let it be known at that time. And we'll move right into item five. We have no presentations and petitions this evening, so we'll go to item six, and we'll invite the Simcoe County Green Belt Coalition, please, to the podium. And I believe we've got Bernard Pope and David Jeffrey who are here tonight to present. Thank you for being here. And whenever you're ready, that mic is live, but it is a bit directional, so you kind of have to talk right into it. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Dolan, council and staff. Thank you for the opportunity of allowing us to speak with you this evening. It's for me a pleasure. My name is Bernard Pope, and I live at Bass Lake in Oremodadi. Every time that I present to municipal councils, I feel like I'm with friends, and Kevin is a friend. Many will agree that the important decisions made at the municipal level have great weight and importance to the community. One should be comfortable in a place like this, and I am. I have offered greetings to staff this evening because I value their wisdom and input in the governance of the township. Their guidance to council should always be in high regard. Therefore, the hope is that my short message is heard and understood. I've been involved in agriculture all my life, working with Dad on the 10th Line of Innisville as an apprentice in Lecombe, Alberta, and at our farm at Oremodadi. I've served on the board of the Simcoe County Federation of Agriculture, the Policy Advisory Committee of the Ontario Federation of Agriculture, and lately as Chair of Ontario Farmland Trust. I'm currently serving on the Policy and Education Committee and the Land Securement Committee for Ontario Farmland Trust. In 2021, the federal census revealed that we're losing at least 319 acres of farmland a day to various forms of development, and this number is increasing from previous census reporting. Our executive director at Ontario Farmland Trust, Martin Strathoff, has extrapolated that at this devastating rate, we'd be out of farmland in 2100. That's no farmland. Many folks do not realize that in Canada, there's only 5% of good land that is considered farmable, with most of that being in Ontario, southern Ontario, which can be seen from the top of the CN Tower. How many folks understand that Ontario farmers and ranchers produce over 200 commodities for the public? This is the reason that Ontario Farmland Trust joined the Simcoe County Green Belt Coalition as a founding member. This collaborative association seeks to advance the protection of this farmland and the support of conservation areas and wetlands on any farm. We understand that we must have this farmland to support farmers and farm families as a long-term farm enterprise. This security of the land base will also grow the businesses that support the agriculture. David Jeffrey is the Chair of the Simcoe County Green Belt Coalition, and I've been extremely impressed with his strong leadership in community and social development. For example, he was the founding executive director of Chigamick Community Health Centre in Midland. Currently, he's focusing on presenting the very valid reasons that why the green belt should be protected and expanded. Please listen carefully to David as he eloquently argues that the protection is absolutely necessary. Thank you.
Thanks, Bernard. So I'll be driving the slides from here. Thank you. Let's go back one. Great. Thank you, Mayor, councillors, for the chance to speak with you tonight. It's an honor and a privilege to be here to share some thoughts with you. I'm David Jeffrey, the executive director, or the old habits, the Chair of the Board for the Simcoe County Green Belt Coalition. I've been there about three years now, and now currently find myself in the chair role. I live in tiny township. I've been there about eight years now. I keep some bees, and I have a small orchard there. Prior to that, I was 10 years in Midland, and then I had raised my daughters in Medante before it became Oremodante for 20 years on a property there. I deeply care about what happens in our region, as I'm sure you all do, and I know that you've taken steps to protect green spaces in your history and your tenures here, wetlands and farmlands. For instance, most of Lake Simcoe's headwaters and roughly two-thirds of its shoreline are protected, as an example, through the Lake Simcoe Protection Act. Prior to Chigamick Community Health Centre, I spent five years as the National Director of Development for the Canadian Parks and Wilderness Society, which is a national conservation organization. I happened to be there at the time, at a very exciting time, when the Nahanni River watershed was protected, and we had a big hand in making that happen, protecting 35,000 square kilometers in Northwest Territories, a big, big gift to the Canadian population. I want to speak to you today about the green belt and ask you to consider a resolution that we're putting forward around encouraging the province to do a meaningful review of the green belt. But first, who are we? The Simcoe County Green Belt Coalition has got 47 members. We believe in a Simcoe that is, that thrives, is ready to respond to the challenges of the climate change challenges, is resilient, just, and able to build better future for our children, grandchildren. We advocate for strong land use, watershed protections, such as the green belt, which is a key tool in that set or arsenal of protections. So the green belt has had a huge impact in Ontario. The 2 million acres, a cornerstone of our economic environmental policy, has produced a variety of ecological services, $71 million of annual carbon offsets, $9.6 billion of annual economic impact, $3.2 billion worth of annual ecosystem services, and $224 million worth of annual flood prevention services. And Bernard will touch on a few other services later on in our presentation. This on the screen is a map of the current boundary of the green belt, and of course, it runs along the south and western and southeast edges of the county. When the review occurred in 2015, there was a carry-on conversation into 2018, and the province proposed to grow the green belt, that was when the Liberals were in power, to grow the green belt into Simcoe County and a couple of key other areas in the province. And that got shelved when the governments changed. The current opportunity is that there's this review that is legislated to occur every 10 years, and we're at that 10-year mark, 2025. And it's an opportunity for municipalities to have a voice and influence the study, that it actually occur and occur in a meaningful way, that would assist you in planning certainties, environmental watershed protections, and agricultural system preservations. So although Simcoe County does not sit fully within the green belt boundaries, its environmental features, particularly water, farmland, are closely tied to the region's long-term resilience. As I mentioned, the proposal in 2018 to expand into Simcoe County was a feature of that government then. And we know that the carbon issues, for example, in climate change, do not understand or respect any kind of boundaries. So for an example, where there might be an impact on water, such as flooding in the south or north of the green belt, that impact will be felt region-wide regardless of where the boundaries of the green belt are. So in a way, we want to figure out processes and methods and policy to set up protections to ensure we can manage some of these environmental issues as they come along and we face them in the future. The motion we're proposing also references the 2015 coordinated land use planning review, which recommended expanding the green belt into pre-hydrological areas, such as moraines and headwaters, to better protect water and ecological health. And I know in my region, tiny township, there's been a longstanding study of the water north of Elmvale, especially in Springwater, to understand the aquifers and aquitards and that underground structures that create the cleanest water that we've seen so far in the world in terms of studies that have happened on that water. So there's an important reason to support some protections so we can take time to understand why we have headwaters that are so clean, and we know that so many of our residents depend on that groundwater. The resolution we're asking you to consider is not about asking Innisville to expand the green belt within your own border boundaries, but ensuring the review process is meaningful and a way to strengthen and perhaps expand the green belt. So we're asking the province, with you as a partner, to conduct a review with rigor that has scientific depth. If municipalities like Innisville put their voices forward, it helps shape a review that protects farmland, ultimately ensures the next generation will have a livable place to call home that's protected. We've spoken with Collingwood, Severn, Springwater, and Oremodate. They've all passed resolutions in the last week and a half. We spoke two days ago, Bernard and I, to clear view, asking the same request of supporting a resolution to ensure the study happens and happens meaningfully. And we're going to speak to Bradshaw West Gilumberry, Newt Thompson, and Wasega Beach in the coming week. The resolution, which I hope you have seen, is got several wherethes, but the therefore be it resolved is that the council supports the exploration of opportunities to expand and strengthen green belt protections, that council calls on the province of Ontario to collaborate with municipalities, indigenous nations, and stakeholders in identifying and protecting additional lands' ecological and agricultural and hydrological significance, and a copy of the resolution be forwarded to the Minister of Municipal Affairs, Housing Minister of Environment, Conservation Parks, Local MPPs, Association of Municipalities of Ontario. Bernard, I'd ask you if you wanted to share any more about ecological services?
I hadn't seen this presentation up until a few weeks ago, and I noted that one of the pages talked about the environmental services that the green belt assists in. And on this sheet, it says $3.2 billion. I don't know whether a lot of councils understand what ecological services are, but I'll give you a short story. I went to NOC School, you know where it is. 52 people, eight grades, one teacher, full discipline. And with all these farm families coming in, there were sniffles coming in. And so we'd go home sometimes with a little bit of drippy nose, and my mother, in the middle of February, would say, "Your dad's built a fire in the bush. Go down there, and supper's at 6:00. Don't be early." So we'd go down there, and we'd play in the bush, and by the time we got back to the house, we realized we weren't sniffling anymore. We'd left all those sniffles in the bush down the cedars. And my mother wouldn't have known that then, but there's 54% more oxygen in a cedar bush. There's a Chinese neurologist who works in Japan right now. He's a researcher and a teacher. His name is Dr. Quinn Lai, and he's written a book called Forest Bathing. And the importance of forest bathing could negate a lot of the health problems in society that we see right now. That's part of the ecological services. So when Mom sent us to the bush, we just had to get dressed. We didn't have to go see a doctor. We went down there and breathed. There's a company in Toronto with an office in Guelph as well. It's called Green Analytics. And if anybody here wants to know about servicing or ecological services, you'll see the value that is put on various components of what nature does. So for example, there was one project where they came up with a number of $65,000 a hectare a year of savings if they protected this land. The other thing I would say is that Kevin grows crops, I'm sorry, Councillor Isis grows crops, I grow crops, and putting in houses means that's the last crop. And is that how you want your people to live? So the ecological services is something that should be really considered by staff and really researched so you understand what I'm talking about, because I've missed a bunch of stuff, I gather. But this resolution that David is asking you to do is not to give up anything. It's to ask the province to do a good review. That's all we want, just a good review. In other words, cover all the bases scientifically and come up with the answer.
We strongly urge you to consider the resolution, and we're happy to take any questions you might have. Thank you for the chance to speak with you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. I'll go to council now for questions and our comments. Councillor Isis.
Thank you, Bernard and David. I definitely don't mind being called my first name. And as you know, I do grow crops and farm. And I remember quite vividly back in 2005, when this green belt became law, and there was a lot of concerns from the farm community. And I can see how this is a really good thing, that the province does a thorough review. And I hope what can be dealt with in that review are some of the, what I would call missing thoughts that farmers have to deal with. And what farmers don't need is another level of regulation to encumber what they do. I think that's what the prior green belt legislation seemed to add more restrictions on, you know, if we want to farm our land a certain way, if we want to tolerate it, if we want to, you know, clear some land to farm some more. We definitely don't want, we want a reduction in the red tape. So I'm hoping that the province can address some of that. I hope there's a realization of a lot of those benefits that Bernard talked about, that having healthy farmland, having productive farmland, and also having farmers who are looked after in what they do, that they're recognized for the work that they do in keeping our countryside clean. And we are on the front lines of the environmental stewardship that our society is looking for. So, you know, I'm happy that this is going forward, but you know, those are some of the things that if, and I hope they ask the farmers, you know, what are the issues that we see with this? And those would be some of the things I think you'll hear.
Well said. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Isis. Other questions and comments? I had one, if I could. So the 2005, was it when the green belt was brought in? So for those municipalities that were mostly green-belted, mostly on the other side of Lake Simcoe, what is there, you know, 20 years later? What's there, what's working good, what isn't, what needs fixed? Have you had any conversations with municipalities that have been living under this legislation for the past 20 years?
That's a fair question, and I'm not actually qualified to answer it, I'm afraid. Do you have any, Bernard, any thoughts on that?
Not directly to Mayor Dolan. However, if I could just expand a little bit on what Councillor Isis said, maybe that would help inform an answer for you. The green belt is not perfect. Kevin and I have talked about this numerous times. Councillor Isis and I have talked about this numerous times. He has attended our Farmland Forum for Ontario Farmland Trust. He was welcomed there, of course, and did a great job. But what I was trying to say in my part of this offering was that if the green belt is designated properly, as they've done in green space in the United Kingdom, it's a long-term security for that area. So if this farmer knows that he can be secure in his enterprise for many years and for his children, he will stay there, and he'll put capital in. He will buy the tractors, and he will buy the combines, and he will, he will look after the farm, he'll steward the farm. And with doing that, with this long-term investment that the farmer has, and a farmer has to have long-term investment, the supportive businesses will come in. So the machinery dealers and the fertilizer dealers and the insurance companies and the bankers, everybody will come in to look after the farmer, because the farmer only has success in mind, and he's got a long-term view of success. He's not looking for a quick buck. This year for soybeans, and we've spoken about this, there's going to be a lot of farmers go for crop insurance. So farmers are price-takers. They're not price-setters. But they need the security of the land in order to make them feel comfortable enough to buy $200,000 tractors and $1 million combines and things like that. So what we're asking for is not you to want the green belt in Innisville necessarily. We'd like that, but what we want you to do is unanimously endorse the resolution that the province does a meaningful review. That's it. And so in answering that, in trying to answer your question, I guess I go off a little bit, don't I? In areas down in the green belt, because it's so imperfect, there are still issues with developers coming in and saying, "We own the land, we're going to farm it," but they're not. They're just putting it into speculation. And I'm quite sure that it's fairly common around here. And if you know where I come from, there you go.
Yes, we do have a lot of that. So we do have a very small sliver of the green belt here in Innisville, but it's minute. We do have specialty crop, which is protected. So we know that will be farmed for generations and that there's investment being made in that specialty crop area. So we, should we have any other questions or comments before we go to the recommendation? Now, typically, we don't pass resolutions without first having staff have a look at them and sending them back. Like you said, we are very, very reliant on our expert staff, and we want to make sure when we do pass a resolution that there's no unintended consequences that we haven't thought about. So I'm going to suggest that we maybe amend the recommendation to say be received and that the resolution be referred to staff to report back. And I'd ask staff if they had any issues with that recommendation.
Thanks, Mayor Dolan. No, we can certainly take that back and review.
Any questions or comments? So mover and a seconder, please, for the resolution. It be moved by Councillor Isis and seconded by Councillor Saunders. Final comments? Thank you so much for being here this evening. We appreciate you taking the time to come and educate us, and thanks again. All in favor?
Thank you.
That is carried. Thank you so much. Next on our agenda is item 6.2, and it is the Child and Youth Advocacy Centre of Simcoe Muskoka. And we're very happy to have Kate Wa here this evening to present. Welcome, Kate.
Thank you. And good evening, Mayor Dolan, councillors and staff. Thank you so much for having us here today. I'm, my name is Kate Wa, and I'm the executive director, the Child and Youth Advocacy Centre of Simcoe Muskoka. So we are going to, first of all, let you know who we are, since a lot of people aren't sure about our organization and what we do there. It's like, is this gonna, there we go. Oh, I did it. I went too far, sorry. Okay. So we serve all of Simcoe Muskoka, and what we do is we coordinate all the multidisciplinary teams across Simcoe Muskoka to ensure that every child's voice is heard. Whenever there is suspected child abuse, neglect, exploitation, or they've witnessed violence or intimate partner violence of any sort, then the forensic teams of the Child Protection Services and the police services across our region bring the kiddos to our centres. We have two brick-and-mortar centres, one in Berry and one in Aurelia. And then we also have a mobile unit. We have a van, and we will go anywhere that the kids and the families need us to be so that travel isn't a barrier. The idea is that we are allowing them to have a trauma-informed investigation. Our centres are child-friendly. We have service dogs, which I wanted to bring one today, but they went camping. We have an advocate that is assigned to the family as soon as they walk in the door. When they come to our centres, they walk in the door, and they're met with the advocate and the dog, and the first thing that our advocate says to them is, "I'm not child protection and I'm not police," which we know for some of our resistant populations means a whole heck of a lot. So again, they're not going to a cool police station. This could be a three-year-old child. They come into our centres, they're welcomed, there's toys, there's snacks, lots of sugary goods, and coffee offered to the parents. And then the police and child protection workers bring those kiddos into our investigation rooms. We have state-of-the-art forensic recording equipment, and they do the investigation there. Across Simcoe Muskoka, across Ontario, there is a joint protocol, which means that child protection services and police services do these investigations together. The whole idea is that these survivors, these victims, are not re-traumatized by the investigation. Now, I can't stop that happening in court, but that's the next stage. So what happens is, because we record it, because they do it together, we're hoping, and the plan is that that kiddo only has to tell their story once to those individuals, and then they move forward. Following the investigation, our advocates support those families every, in every way they need. It's a terribly, terribly complicated and confusing system. And the last thing you need to do is try to figure out where you're supposed to go and who you can connect with. We cover the whole region, like I said, and we work closely with not only the police services and child protection, but all the community referral partners across our region. In fact, we just had our second In fact, we just had our second, we have, we call them our MDT, our Multidisciplinary Team Meetings, where we all come together just to collaborate and make sure that we're serving these kiddos and these families as best as possible. We're just going to go to a video that we created just recently. So this video goes out to our families if there is time. A lot of times, the investigations are quite time-sensitive, and there isn't time, but this video also sits on our website, and it's to let them know who we are, to try to, again, reduce that anxiety and that stress as much as possible. This shouldn't be as traumatizing as the events that these poor kiddos have witnessed. So please go ahead and play the video. Thank you.
Hey, I heard you come to visit us. The Child and Youth Advocacy Centre of Simcoe Muskoka is a place where caring professionals come together to support kids, youth and families. The CYAC SM is a safe space where you get to tell your story to police officers and child protection workers. We meet lots of kids here for many different reasons. Here, come in. When you get here, you'll be welcomed by one of our friendly team members. They'll tell you what will happen while you're here and introduce you to another safe adult to talk to. Let me show you around so you know what to expect. You'll explore one of our rooms, sit in our cozy chairs, and talk about being healthy and safe. We even have snacks for you. While you're talking, we collect and record information using cameras to help keep things accurate. One of our facility dogs will be there to snuggle with you and provide comfort as you share your story. At the same time, we will meet with your caregiver to see if they need any resources. If you ever want to talk more about your feelings later, we offer counselling services to help. We also run fun and engaging groups for young people who want to learn more about staying safe. If coming to us is impossible, we can even come to you. Our mobile unit allows us to bring a dog, camera and some snacks for you to tell your story in a place close to where you live.
At the CYAC, we want to make sure that everyone gets the help they need so they can start feeling better. We work with a whole team of professionals, and you might see some of us while you're here. We want to make sure that you feel safe, supported and cared for while at our centre.
Sometimes it takes a lot of courage to go to a new place and meet new people. Remember, it's normal and okay to feel nervous, excited or both. No matter what you're feeling, you have the team at the CYAC to support you.
Thank you, and that was a grant from the Justice Canada for us to be able to do that. I want to also say that our model, the CYAC, is not new. It started in Europe many, many, many years ago, and in fact, it's mandated by the government as an essential service, as well as in the United States, it's mandated as an essential service. Here in Canada, this nationally-recognised, internationally-recognised model is still slow to get that pick up. However, I was just at a trauma-informed policing conference, and they're putting the CYACs into the protocol. So we're, we're hoping down the road, this is going to become a funded, a funded service. Because right now, it is a nonprofit. We do, everything is free. I mean, healing from trauma should not come with a price tag. So the last thing we want to do is have people have to pay for this and add more barriers. So we fundraise, we do, I write a grant every day, and we, we are seeking help with that because our numbers and our needs are growing. And as Valeria said in the video, so actually as well, Valeria is one of the kiddos that came through our centre. So she experienced abuse as a young girl. She's just finishing her court case now, and we just more recently have the Child Victim Witness Programme, which is run by the Ministry of the Attorney General. They've gifted, given it to us to manage, so we now can work with these kiddos right from the moment of disclosure all the way to the end of the court case. So Valeria, and one of the things that we know is really, really important for these survivors is advocacy. Advocacy is a massive path towards healing, and she is one of the most fabulous advocates anybody could ask for. So she speaks at anything, and she's, she's worked with another organisation called One Child to really hone those skills. We have a youth advisory team that she's also working with now to make sure that all of our practices and all of our policies are informed by the kiddos we served and those with lived experiences. So the reality is, and this is the not-so-fun part, is that we have some serious issues when it comes to child abuse and neglect and exploitation in our country. One in three girls, one in five boys have experienced unwanted sexual acts before the age of 18. And in fact, one in six Canadians polled said that they had experienced some kind of child maltreatment before the age of 15. The scary part, too, is that only 10% of them said they ever reported it. So that means even these stats, 90% of them are not even being captured here. We know that 25% of abuse victims are under the age of 12, and the most sobering statistic there is, is that all of human trafficking cases in Canada, 67% of them happen here on Ontario, and most of them in our backyard. So that's from Toronto to North Bay. We have more, almost two-thirds of all the human trafficking cases. So we have a massive need. And as you know, and especially in the Bury area and everywhere else, things are not going so well, and children are often the collateral victims of that. So our courts programme right now, we're only six months into our fiscal, and we've seen 85% of the cases that they did last year. It's just growing astronomically. We're at two-thirds of the investigations we supported last year. So our numbers are growing, the need for support is growing, and we want to make sure that when these families go through these things, hope and healing is meeting them at the door. We have several programmes that we offer. It's not just our advocacy programme, which is what the video there was about. We're always trying to find where are those gaps and where are those holes, and we see them because we're on the frontline with all of our, our multidisciplinary team. So we've started a counselling programme called Bridging Supports to Wellness. We saw so many families sitting there for months and weeks and so on to get the counselling service they need. And we know that almost 90% of cases that are received right away and get that initial crisis intervention, then you avoid the complex post-traumatic stress disorder. So we wanted to get in right away. As well, there's so many kiddos and so many caregivers and witnesses and siblings, they don't have anywhere to go for counselling. So we basically pick up anybody that doesn't have a space for that. And we have a fabulous clinical councillor on staff that, she's just amazing and connects with absolutely everyone. We also have started a prevention education programme for girls aged 12 to 18, where we talk about healthy boundaries and relationships and consent and how to stay safe online. It's a seven-week programme where we bribe the snot out of them with food and gift cards and everything for that resistant population to show up. And it's actually one of the programmes we're going to be starting to offer at the Innisville Library. So we've been working with them about. And doing a prevention education programme for boys as well, which we just received a grant for to be able to start that. It's a massive gap in, across Ontario. We also, as we described at the mobile forensic interviews, and as I said, we now have the Child Victim Witness Programme that we're managing under our umbrella and our fabulous facility dogs, which make going-to-work wonderful every day. So you, confusing grasp, but basically, our numbers are growing, and we're seeing more and more caseloads coming in. We're also seeing them being more complicated. Mental health issues are affecting families, addictions. We're seeing a lot more families come in and say, "You know what I need is food. You know what I need is a bus pass. You know what I need?" And, and so we're there to help connect with all those community referral partners so that we can get people what they need. We also have all of our own prices rising, so rent is through the roof. We're actually moving our Bury location now into the Child Protection Services building, so they have some space because they're giving, you know, then we can be in that social services hub, and they're really helping us out to make sure that we can keep the lights on for these, for the work that we do. So what we're asking is, we are going to all the municipalities across the region. Arilia has always, the city of Arilia has always been very generous with us, and there has been, let's say, little bits and pieces of other municipalities. I've, I left education, I taught for 22 years before coming here, and I've only been in this role for about a year. And I think that the more support we can get, for I know from our region, we're serving all of these kiddos, we're working with everybody across, then we can spend more time helping them, developing our programmes and honing our skills, and less time hunting for funds. And that's what we're asking for you. Where our funding idea came from, so with the $40,000, so we looked at the population of each municipality of the kiddos under 18, and then we said, basically, $2, $2, $2.50 a kiddo would be all that we're asking for. So that $40,000 that we're requesting, and please know we'll take anything, is really, would be able to serve about 55 to 60 families from this region alone. We want to expand. We want to have a satellite here in Innisville. We want to have a satellite in Muskoka. We need to make it easier, not just for the families, but also for the police officers because they still can just, they choose to use us, they don't have to. Once they come through our doors, they realise we make their jobs also fabulous and we much easier, so they stick with us. But it's getting those new recruits in, so that's another thing we're always doing, is going to platoon briefings and just doing that razzle-dazzle show so people know we exist. So like I said, we've got the city of Arilia's, Undera Spring Water has generously also donated, and we're on a campaign trail for all of October to talk to every other municipality that we can speak to. So basically, what we're asking for is that your help, your support will ensure that any family from Innisville that comes through our doors or that we go to them, there's hope and healing meeting them when they come. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Kate, for your presentation. Questions or comments? councillor, Deputy Mayor Fowler.
First of all, thank you for the services that you provide. I can understand how heartbreaking it may be on a day-to-day basis, and the intestinal fortitude it takes to get up every day and continue to do the work is phenomenal, and I appreciate that greatly. Just, I'm not sure how applicable it may be, but have you reached out to the Innisville Community Foundation to speak with them in regards to funding?
We have. We are reaching out to everyone on the planet, yes, absolutely. So we're, we haven't set a date for that yet, but we would like to, absolutely.
They're actually phenomenal. They're, they're funded, but from, from us and whatnot, but it's the first step, I would say, when you step into Innisville, and anything we can do beyond that point of view, we would love to help, I'm assuming.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. And just to your point about the, we often talk about, we don't, the police and the child protection workers are the real superheroes who get all the nitty-gritty. Not that we, my staff does fabulous work, but we, we feel like superheroes most of the time. We're the beginning of most people's healing journey. So yes, there are definitely tough days, and we, we work really hard at making sure that everybody is supported and cared for, but it is a fabulous place to be in, where we're making a real difference every single day, and we see the rewards every single day. But thank you very much.
Yeah, with your help to go to work with those dogs, I'm telling you, that would be nice. Other questions or comments? So, yeah, the deputy mayor's suggestion was going to be mine, definitely reach out to our Innisville Community Foundation. It is arm's length, that has its own board, but it's there to support organisations that support Innisville residents. So it's right up, right up their alley.
Thank you.
And I know also, I was at the South Simcoe Police Association Golf Tournament this year, and I know that you were there.
We were there.
Helping out, and I think that received some funds from, from the association as well. And so I think being there also would be a great place to get new recruits, to understand that your services are there. So thank you so much for being here tonight, and we really appreciate your time.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Could I please have a mover and a seconder to receive the delegation? Moved by councillor Drudge and seconded by deputy Fowler. All those in favour? That is carried. Thanks very much. That takes us to item seven, and that's the item on the agenda where members of council who have been delegated to different boards or authorities to report back out on, on the work they've done there. Anyone have anything for this evening? Deputy Fowler?
Thank you, worship. This past Sunday, we had our Second Annual Heritage Walk that was organised by the Heritage Advisory Committee, and once again, everybody stepped up. We have members of the community step up. We had, where is Mr Jacob? He is the, he is one of the Keystone members that helped organise this event, so thank you very much for that. The history in this town is phenomenal, and to see everybody gather in 30-degree heat on an October day, I can't believe I ever say those two words together. It was just incredible, the amount of people that showed up and the interest that was, that was shown. So we're looking forward to next year and what we can do and find someplace new in Innisville to discover. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Isis?
Thank you, worship. We've recently had a Nanosaga Valley Conservation Authority meeting where we put a budget for the 2026 together that we're going out to, to all the towns in the watershed. I'm happy to report it's, it's a very fair budget. The Conservation Authority had some service levels that was dealing with in the past couple of years, and those challenges have largely been, been improved upon. I believe the budget will be seen coming in at just under a 3% increase. So I know that's just the first step in the process of our staff receiving it and bringing it back to council, but that's what NVCA has been involved with recently. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Isis. Anyone else? Councillor Drudge?
Thank you, worship. Just a quick comment. LSRCA, just a quick update on the conservation centre that's happening in Scalen Creek. We just had an update, and it's still on schedule to open officially this upcoming September, so 2026 September, it will officially open.
Thank you for that. Anyone else? Seeing none? I just have a couple of items. So first of all, as you all know, we're coming up to a budget refresh for 2026. So this council did pass last year a two-year budget for 2025 and 2026, but 2026, we always do not a full-on, a full-on budget presentation or, or reach in, but we do do a refresh to make sure that we're in good shape for the next year. And as you also know, with strong mayor powers, these budgets are a little more difficult, not difficult, but a little more workarounds to do to get them, to get them out. Budgets are one thing that strong mayor powers are not allowed to delegate. So you'll see tomorrow a mayoral decision, which will be to, for staff to prepare their 2026 operating and capital budget, and asking staff to present that, and I believe that's going to happen on December the 10th. It'll be the same process as we've always had. There'll be lots of question and answers, lots of time to go through it, as much engagement as we need to understand and, and work through it to come up to something that we are comfortable with. And when the majority of this council feels comfortable with, with the draft, then that will be the budget that I present to you. So really, the same process as last year, but just made a little bit more difficult by this new legislation. And I'm happy to answer any questions on that, for anyone who has any. I also want to speak about an AMO board meeting that was held since the last meeting. AMO did meet for a couple of days, the end of September. It was the first meeting since the conference in August, so we did get a bit of wrap-up from that, although they're still receiving surveys from that, from the conference to see what was, what went well and what needed to be changed. We also met to talk about the advocacy position and approach to take with the provincial government about the municipal conflict of interest, I'm sorry, the code of conduct and the integrity commissioner process as proposed by Bill Nine, and it's the Municipal Accountability Act. So we've hammered out our approach with that, and that advocacy work will begin. We also talked a lot about automated speed enforcement, and I won't belabour that too much, except to say that we tried to get the premier to talk about tweaking the system so that it could still be effective in keeping our kids safe around school zones, but understanding what some of the pushback was from the community who felt that it was unfair. But we, we've heard this week, still no, but no legislation until the House comes back. So as it is now, except for the Canada Post-Strike, it's business as usual here in the community. And then the only other thing I would highlight that wasn't kind of business as usual at the AMO board was the Building Canada Homes Act. The AMO president and the executive director were invited by the Prime Minister. The AMO president and the executive director were invited by the Prime Minister to attend the announcement in Ottawa. We were the only municipal association outside of FCM that was invited to that. So they announced a billion for supportive and transitional housing and a commitment to work with the province to pair these federal investments and wrap around employment and healthcare supports and 1.5 billion for Canada Rental Protection and the initial focus on 4,000 factory-built homes on federal lands across six sites. So it's a start and we were pleased that the federal government recognized Ontario municipalities as an important partner. And that's it for me. Next, we'll go to the consent list and we'll ask people to let me know if they want to move any of these items to committee the whole for further and fulsome debate. If not, the recommendation that is printed in the agenda will be approved at the end of the meeting. A1, the special council meeting minutes dated September the 24th. A2, the council meeting minutes dated December 24th. B1, the Innisville Heritage Advisory Committee meeting report from September the 11th. B2, the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee meeting from September the 16th. Counselor Zanella, did you want to pull that into committee?
I just, I want to, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. C1, the land donation at 920 Birch Avenue. D1, the 2024 Development Charges Treasurer Statement. Could somebody pull that one for me, please? Deputy Mayor Fowler, thank you. There are no bylaws for tonight's agenda and there's no correspondence for action, but there are correspondence for information. G1, the Innisville Library Board. Oh, sorry, I missed one. Sorry, F1, sorry, that was the one we added. Counselor Ices, did you want to refer that to committee?
Yes, I would.
Thank you. Thank you. G1, the Innisville Library Board Meeting Minutes from June 23rd. The AMO Policy Update About ASC. The Simcoe Muskoka District Health Unit Annual Report. Seeing none, I just wanted to recognize that I did attend the retirement event for Dr. Charles Gardner, who's retiring after, I can't remember how many years, but many, many, I think close to 30 years of service. And welcome Lisa Simon, who will be the new Medical Officer of Health for Simcoe Muskoka. G4, the County Council Meeting Highlights from September 23rd. And G5, there's lots of proclamations, International Day of Rural Women, Local Government Week. And I will take a moment at Local Government Week to talk for a moment and ask the clerk who can also talk about different actions and activities that we have going on for Local Government Week, which we all know is the most important level of government closest to the people. Clerk Toma.
Thank you, Mayor Dolan. Local Government Week is an opportunity to celebrate the democratic process within our local municipalities and there will be 444 municipalities in Ontario who will be celebrating and providing information to their residents. We will have opportunities with a kickoff the week before with the seats at the table, which is creating space in local democracy where our very own Mayor Dolan will be speaking in an event and joining Dr. Kofi Hope in an engaging discussion about open doors and local politics. We'll be holding a local government session that is geared more towards high school students at the library on October 23rd. And prior to that, on the Tuesday of Local Government Week, we'll have a special municipal matters drop-in session in council chambers where we'll be providing information, takeaways, and opportunities to talk with clerk services about your local government, the upcoming election, and any other information that you're seeking. We'll also be holding an opportunity to get together with your local council member or deputy mayor or mayor. Before council on October 22nd commencing at 5:30, there will be refreshments and snacks provided and the opportunity to find out more information about your very own board.
Thank you, Clerk Toma and to the clerk's team for recognizing this week. I didn't say it, I said it tongue in cheek, but I do mean it. We're the level of government that plows your road, that gives your kids a place to skate, that provides emergency services when you call 911. We're right on the front lines and we're very proud of the services that we provide. So on that Tuesday, if you come in and you want to come and sit in the mayor's chair, bang the gavel, swing around in the chairs, you're more than welcome. Please come on out and learn all about what local government does for your community. And we have a few other proclamations. We have Child and Caregiver Education Appreciation Day and World Polio Day. And that is it for our consent list. So now we'll, we have no motions for which notice has been given and we'll go right to then the items that we'll consider and the consent list recommendation. A mover and a seconder, please, for this item. Counselor Constantine and Counselor Ices, all those in favor? That is carried. And the first item, oh, sorry, we have to resolve into committee the whole first. So that would be Counselor Zanella and Counselor Richardson, all those in favor? That is carried. And our first item was pulled by Counselor Zanella.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to thank Deputy Mayor for bringing the 10th Line and 25th Side Road issue to the Traffic Safety Council and also to thank the council for going ahead and looking at some type of resolution for this. This intersection is a very bad intersection. Lots of accidents happen there and there's a lot of issues with the actual intersection itself. So I'm really happy that it's going to be looked at. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Zanella. So I'm going to say it was B2 that was pulled instead of B1. And Counselor Zanella, did you have a seconder for the motion? Counselor Richardson, thank you. And I think I saw that the data, so what happens when we do get concern about an intersection or a road? The first thing that happens is it goes out to get data on that particular section and I think the data is being collected there as we speak. So we'll get the information from that data to see if it meets the warrants and that will come back to the Traffic Advisory Committee and then, of course, back to this table. So thank you for that. All those, any other comments or questions on the Traffic Safety Committee from September 16th? Seeing none, all those in favor? That is carried. Next was item D1. And Counselor Ices is the seconder. Did you have any questions or comments on that item? Deputy? Okay, so I did pull this only to speak to our treasurer about the, this is a report that is, it's a requirement, but also good information for us to have. And it's in regards to the development charges statement and the reserve, how much we have in each development charge account. If you listen to the news at all, you've, you've heard that municipalities are flush with money and we have all these development charges that we aren't spending and we're just hoarding them. So much in fact that the new legislation says that we have to show that we've spent, I believe, 60% of that reserve. So, but my question, when I did look at the amounts in our, in our report, Ms. Webb, it did talk about a lot of the reserve funds being in negative balances at the end of this year. And I wanted to ask, because of all of the rhetoric, both from the federal government and the provincial government, I'm not as confident that development charges will be around to the extent they are without possibly some changes coming up. So just to ask the Finance Department how you're dealing with that and how you're keeping an eye on the balances in those reserves.
To you, Mayor Dolan. As you mentioned, with Bill 23, there was a change that required us to allocate 60%, to spend or allocate 60% of the DCs. That only actually relates to roads, water and wastewater services, but on this report, we do reflect what we have committed. And so that committed line represents capital projects that have been approved by council that will be funded by development charges. And as Mayor Dolan identified, while, when we take into account those committed funds, we have overcommitted our DC reserve funds. That's, you know, not uncommon to see in municipalities, you know, because it is challenging in terms of the timing of when our, these infrastructure works happen and when we collect the monies. It's important to note, though, that those committed dollars, they are approved capital project dollars, but they're not, they don't necessarily represent contractual obligations. And so as town staff, we continually monitor the DC balances, what's happening with our DC balances. We know that there's risk there in terms of, you know, a change in the economy and the housing market in terms of what we're collecting. So we're always monitoring that. And we've got a few tools available to, you know, deal with situations where we think we could be in a position where we don't have the necessary funds to address the committed projects that council has. And that could include debt financing of these projects. It could include, a lot of these projects that are committed are large, multi-year capital projects that have different phases to them. So there could be EAs or studies or phases to the construction projects. So another option could be pausing it at a specific phase or deferring a project. So this is something that we monitor very closely and would be coming to council if we needed to, you know, utilize one of those tools to address any concerns with regards to our commitments.
Thank you for that. And just one further question, either to Director Gibson or yourself. In regards to the timing issue now with collecting development charges as opposed to at issuance of permit and not collecting them until occupancy, are we going to have to make significant changes or is that going to affect us in any way?
To you, Mayor Dolan. So this is something that we're currently investigating or looking into what the financial impacts to the town would be. As you mentioned, with Bill 17, they've potentially proposed that DCs for residential buildings not be collected until occupancy. So whereas now it's at building permits, so that could be another 18 to 24 months before we actually collect the money. So we're evaluating those impacts and we're expecting to come back to council with that information.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments on this item? Counselor Ices?
Thank you, worship. Maybe just to help me understand the statement of the fund balance. So if we look at a pick, fire, and rescue as an example, it's got a negative balance at the start and it's got a negative balance at the end. Is that just because we've committed to do something, but we haven't received the development charges, but we're expecting to receive them or we don't know?
Ms. Webb?
To you, Mayor Dolan, and to Counselor Ices. So with the fire services in particular, and there's some other services that are like this as well, we have an ending cash balance of a deficit of $7.6 million. And so this largely relates to the Big Paypoint Fire Hall. So that fire hall was constructed, but we take a look at the, our total cash balances and evaluate whether we think we need to debt finance the project. So at that time, and we look at the number of years. So we said, no, we don't think we need to debt finance that and that we'll be able to finance that internally ourselves. And as those future DCs come in, they'll certainly reduce that deficit balance.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions, all in favor of the resolution? That is carried. Thank you. And the last item that was pulled was Counselor Ices.
Thank you, worship. I have my neighbor here to second it. Counselor Saunders. So I brought this motion forward. I attended a meeting with the Nanosaga Valley Conservation Authority, the Agricultural Advisory Committee. And this is quite a new development that has happened in Clearview Township where a large piece of farmland has been purchased by the Department of National Defense with the intent of putting an Arctic Over the Horizon radar project. It's quite interesting if you look at it from kind of the Star Wars, if you think of Missile Command and some of those things, these things are really starting to come, come to light. But obviously, our huge problem with this is they've picked prime agricultural land to put this site on. And the department purchased 700 acres currently. And if this project goes to full build-out, it will be 4,000 acres that they would need. And it basically sterilizes the land that it's on. So that's a huge chunk out of the Clearview agricultural production. They're very concerned that this will go through. So there's a letter that is in the report from Clearview that I thought it would be appropriate that the Town of Innisville support and send off as well to hopefully convince the federal government to pick a more appropriate site that doesn't take away valuable farmland.
Thank you, Counselor Ices. Questions or comments on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor of the recommendation as printed? That is carried. Thank you. Now we have our rise recommendation, please, and it's moved by Counselor Constantine and seconded by Counselor Ices. All those in favor? That is carried. And next, the recommendation of the committee of the whole meeting being adopted as resolutions of council, moved by Counselor Drage, seconded by Counselor Zanella. All those in favor? That is carried. And finally, we have no notice of motion, so we'll go to announcements. And Counselor Ices?
Thank you, worship. From Ward 1, this is the Last Farmer's Market Week this Thursday and there's the annual pumpkin carving contest. You really know that the seasons are changing when, when you hear that the farmer's market is at the end of its season. So Innisville Spartans have a game this Saturday at 7:00 PM in the IRC. October 17th, a grand opening of Kessler's Kitchen in the Rosardo Health Center. October 18th, Harvest Haunt Market at the Stroud Arena from 10:00 to 4:00. Also on October 18th, the Spartans, Innisville Spartans have a home game against the Allison Hornets at 7:00 PM. And on November 1st, there is Innisville Comedy Night Dinner and Show from the Stroud Banquet Hall. Ice Corp is putting that on. It starts at 5:30 and the tickets are $75. On another note, as I spoke about the farmer's market and the season's changing, farmers are busy harvesting their crops this time of year. So I would ask those traveling the roads to provide themselves a little more patience as the farmers are doing their work. And I'd also like to thank Mayor Dolan for coming with me to give a certificate to my mom and dad on their 60th anniversary. I know they really appreciated that. So thank you, Lynn. I know they really appreciated that, so thank you, Lynn.
Thank you, Councillor Ices. It was wonderful. And I'm going to be judging those pumpkins tomorrow, so make sure you bring your best carving work. Councillor Constantine?
Thank you. And the Innisville, sorry, the Innisville Royal Canadian Legion will be holding a Remembrance Day ceremony on November 8th at 11:00.
Thank you for that. Councillor Richardson?
I started, wanted to say, first of all, is the Fall Fest was just this Saturday. It was amazing, turned out great weather again, thanks to Innisville having great weather for one of our events. Thank you to everyone that helped to organize it. It was great to see all the different community groups as well that were there and set up tables. On October 18th is the second annual music at the market put on by the Triton, Nantyre Triton Music Band. On October the 19th as well, at Town Square is the annual Fall Fest and Talent Show organized by Candy from 10 till 2. And then surrounding at the end of the month, on the 25th, is Spooktacular. It's the annual trick-or-treating on Innisville Beach Road. So make sure you dress everyone up and have some fun there.
Thank you so much. Councillor Zenella?
Okay, so thank you. I'm reporting for Ward 4 tonight. So Thursday night, the Dart League is at the Lions Club at 7:00 PM and spares are welcome. And we'd like to thank the Innisville Beach Cruisers for another great year and we, at the Innisville Park, and we look forward to the 2026 season. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Zenella. Councillor Saunders?
On October, excuse me, October 18th, the Scandi Cove is their annual craft and gift show from 9 to 1 at the Wheel. Friday Harbor has a Halloween walk all through October, starting October 10th and ends in November 1st. And then on October 25th, they have the Haunted Harbor Experience Trick-or-treating on the boardwalk. As well for the Legion, October 25th, there's a Poppy Fun Dart Tournament. And on November 1st, there's Music Bingo.
Thank you. Councillor Drudge?
Thank you, Worship. On October 17th, there's a grand opening at the Pizza Hut in Cookstown at 1:00 PM. On October 18th, there's the Diwali Celebration at the Churchill Community Centre from 5:00 to 9:00 PM. Also on October 18th is the Guilford Hall's OG Bash Oktoberfest. That starts at 7:00 PM. You can get your tickets at GuilfordHall@yahoo.ca. And on October 19th, at the Guilford Hall, there's the 11th Annual Guilford Hall Soup Contest from 12 to 2.
And I am bound and bent, I'm going to win the Golden Ladle this year.
You might, because I'm not entering. I'm helping out this year.
One less, one less person to compete against. Thank you for that. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Worship. Apparently, everyone's already, you know, got everything covered very well. We're very active council members, which is incredible. The two things I would like to say is that this past, this past weekend, they had the Cookstown firefighters had their annual pancake breakfast and information session. I think it's really incredible that what they do with the community. Shout out to everyone who took the time to just, you know, put the light in the kids' eyes and fill the bellies at the same time. And then immediately after that, many council members went to Innisfall. And that was phenomenal as well with the music and the vendors and the events. It was just, it was a day to remember because by the time you were done, you were very, very tired, very, very sugared up and very, very full. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'll just, I've just got a couple more. So this week is Customer Service Appreciation Week. And we want to give a great big thank you to our customer service team. They have what I believe is one of the hardest jobs in this whole building. They have to know about everything. They have to be able to answer all the questions. And sometimes people that are walking through the door aren't very happy and they have to deal with people, you know, that are maybe frustrated. And they do such a good job of that, answering all the emails, answering all the phones. So please take a moment, if you're in Town Hall, and say a thank you to our fabulous customer service team. I, along with CEO Jershau, attended a Truth and Reconciliation event at Tarawa First Nation. It was really interesting to attend such an event and it was well-attended by young children and watching the young children dance and watching them sing and the young, the young people in the drum circle. It was really wonderful to see at that age them doing things that their parents would have been punished for. So it was, it was wonderful, a wonderful event. And there was also a Truth and Reconciliation learning event here at Town Hall, which I attended as well. I also went to a Youth Connects meeting, one of their first meetings, to just thank the young people that are showing leadership skills and helping out in the community and creating that opportunity for them to have a voice, and that was very much appreciated. Many, many months ago, I nominated Mr. Daniel Vaz for the 2025 Prime Minister's Award for Teaching Excellence. Unfortunately, we did get an email this week saying that he wasn't chosen, but just to be nominated for such an award is truly, I think, important to show that Mr. Vaz, he's an incredible teacher in our community. He runs the music program at Nantyre Shores. And we really congratulate him on his nomination and thank him for all of the extra, extra work that he does in our community. Last night also, I attended congratulations to the recipients of the Ontario Volunteer Service Awards. It was a great event. We had six Town of Innisville volunteers that received awards. Barb Bagley, Sue Bennett, Kim Boss, Deb Crawford, and Hillary Mallett, and Ann Smith. And these individuals were all recognized for the work they do in their community and they were given a pin and some recognition by the Province of Ontario. Besides the ones that the town nominated, there was some other Innisville residents there, and two I ran into. One was Dawn Saunders. Dawn is a member of the Churchill, I want to say Anglican Church. And he's been 15 years on the Alzheimer Society and got an award for that. And Jean McGinley, Jean is a sweet, sweet lady. She's also a member of St. James United in Stroud. 30-plus years as a volunteer with the Royal Victoria Health Centre. So I'm sure there were more. Those were just the ones that I ran into. So congratulations and thank you. The volunteers really are the heart of our community. While I'm congratulating people, I really want to congratulate Innisville resident Anne Bowman for being awarded the Ernie Crossland Young Conservationist Award at last night's Lake Simcoe Region Conservation Authority Awards Dinner. And that would be the daughter of our very own Nicole Bowman, a very proud mama. And that is, I get to that awards most year, but I was at the Ontario ones last night, so I missed it. But the Ernie Crossland Award is like the biggest award of the night. So well done to Anne. Also, there were a couple of other awards. There was the Healthy Community Awards that South Simcoe Streams got last night and also the Healthy Water Award by Wildridge Farms. So congratulations to all of those people. And then I think that's about it. Oh, one other thing. So Empower Simcoe. Empower Simcoe is a group that does a lot of good work throughout Simcoe County, but a lot in Innisville. And they work with early years, they have an early years centre in Thornton, they work through our library, and they do a lot of work with developmental disabled adults. They, on October the 30th, are having a celebrating community champions fashion show. It's at Georgian Downs. It's October 30th at 7 o'clock. The tickets are $55 each and it's a fundraiser, but you also will get some appetizers and desserts for that. And I'm going to be one of the participants in the fashion show this year. I wasn't really keen on doing something like that until I met a Believe in Yourself community member. Her name's Alison Bobette. Alison says she's been doing this for years and she's a veteran and is a piece of cake and she'll hold my hand. So her and I are going down the catwalk together in our new outfits and I'm really looking forward to that. So if you're available to come out that night and support Empower Simcoe, that would be wonderful. And then finally, I just want to wish everybody a very, very happy Thanksgiving. I hope that you have a lot to be thankful for. I know I do and going to be sharing that with my family this weekend. So happy Thanksgiving to everyone. And Oliver, anything for the staff? Seeing nothing? Then we'll move on to the confirming bylaw and adjournment at 8:20 PM. Mover and a seconder, please, Councillor Drudge and Councillor Richardson. All those in favor, that is carried. Thanks, everyone who's come out and thank those who are watching and have a good rest of the evening.